Good evening. Today is April the 11th. Tonight's school committee meeting is being broadcasted by local media outlets. If you wish for a copy of this, please reach out to local media or the administration. But before we begin tonight's agenda with the reorganization of the school committee, I just want to say a few words on my own. Thank you guys for electing me to be chair. Some of you, some of you guys weren't here. Actually, you probably were, I can't remember. But it's been an honor. I've learned so much filling this spot. It's totally an undertaking. It's definitely a second job at some points. But without the help of all of you guys, Jen, you and I have become buddy-buddy. We've had a lot of conversations and throwing ideas back and forth with each other and along with everybody else. And Kevin, it's been a pleasure. Craig, Kathy, thank you very much. And again, I was honored to do it and kind of glad it's over. Kind of glad. No, but thank you all for trusting me to do this spot. And I think I've done very well for the district and I hope anyway. That being said, let's move on to the first order of business and the election of a new chairperson. Can I get anyone to make a motion? Jim?
I'd like to nominate Jen.
For our chair.
Okay. Second, or is there one? Second?
I'll second.
Before we say all in favor, I'm gonna agree with you guys. Jen, I think you'd be perfect for the spot. You've proven yourself to be a leader as you fill this chair as well. You care a lot about the district, not just the kids that are in the district, but you also look at it from a taxpayer point of view as well. You care deeply for the teachers and the administration. I think you'd fill the spot perfectly. With all of that, can I get, I nominate Jen, motion. You second it, Jen? All in favor? All in favor except...
Even for yourself, all in favor of yourself.
Okay. All in favor except for Chris. And the chair is yours.
Thank you.
Oh, one opposed, I'm sorry, Chris. Thank you. Go ahead, Jen. Or you?
With that, so I guess before we get to an election of a vice chairperson, maybe I'll take a moment and officially thank you, Joe, for all that you've done for us over the past year. And I know, just thinking about moving into this role right now, I can imagine the trepidation that you must have felt moving into it. And it feels daunting and overwhelming, but thankfully, I was looking for a second job. So I'm most appreciative of the opportunity and I appreciate everyone's support, I truly do.
Thank you.
So with that, would anyone like to make a motion for an election of a vice chair for our committee? Jen?
Yeah, I'd like to motion for Jim to be vice chair of the school committee.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Okay. So that passes with one, two, three.
Yep.
I probably, so now this is where people will have to be patient with me as I learn the roles, but I didn't ask for any discussion. So actually, I'm gonna back that up for a minute and I'm going to, can I rescind that vote?
Sure.
Okay.
I agree.
Would anyone like to make a motion for a vice chair?
A motion for Jim.
Joe, would you like to? Thank you.
A motion for Jim to be vice chair?
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I would like to second.
Now that we have a seconded motion on the floor, is there any discussion that anyone would like to partake in? Okay. Could we please now vote? All in favor of Jim as our vice chair? Okay. Thank you, everybody.
You should call all opposed.
All opposed? Okay. Five in favor, one opposed.
It takes time.
It will definitely take time. All right. Okay. We need to elect a secretary. Typically, I believe that Dr. McIntyre has served in that role.
Yes.
So far, you're undefeated.
So far, you're undefeated? Okay.
I will motion to make Mr. McIntyre the secretary.
In a second. Mr. LaGore? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Well, we'll keep that streak going. All right. With that, I'd like to move on to approval of minutes from our last meeting. Did everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
We can give that to Jen.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion for approval of minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe. And all in favor? So that's five in favor and one abstaining.
Okay.
Okay. John obviously wasn't here at our last meeting. Okay. Okay, that brings us to announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anyone have any announcements to share with the group tonight?
I like to just, almost like a public service announcement. I've noticed a lot of traffic that builds up at the high school field when my son comes out of track and there's always sports and everything going there. I just want to urge the community not to park in front of the handicap spots. I know your kids are waiting to be picked up or if they're not being picked up, there's a whole school of parking spots to park at. Shouldn't be parking in front of handicap spots, period. I've had to tell a few people to move their cars. I got a few looks, which is fine. I've also had to get in touch with the chief of police who's now actively looking at it. So if you don't want a $200 and something dollar ticket for parking in front of a handicap spot, don't park there. Your kids are in track, they can walk to where you're parked. That's healthy for them. That's my two cents. Thank you.
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Jim, go ahead.
Actually, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Joe.
Over the last year.
Thank you, Joe.
I really appreciate your time. We all do. We know it's a lot of work. I think you did a great job and I thank you for your commitment.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Any other comments besides Dr. McIntyre?
I'm not stealing yours, but...
That'd be fine.
I had the pleasure of going to the Books and Beyond's at Memorial School yesterday. Joe was there, Meg was there. There were over 230 kids that were recognized who read over 13,000 books in eight weeks. So just an incredible feat and congratulations to all the kids at Memorial.
We've got five quick ones. First, again, thanks, Joe, for your service this past year. It's a lot more work than people think it is. I don't say that until after the new chair takes his place, voted in. But I think you did a great job and I think you handled the role, I think, with grace and with, I think, every student in mind, so I appreciate that sincerely.
Thank you, sir.
I also want to congratulate John Erickson, our newest, oldest member. Welcome back, John. It's good to have you back. A few things going on in the schools the last couple of weeks. The first thing I want to talk about is myself, Mr. Consigli, Meg Hornberger, and two of our teachers had the opportunity to attend an MCIEA event. And they're an organization that we partnered with around assessment. And our two teachers, which were Alyssa Holland and Dan Cody, actually led breakout sessions. And I think they really represented Milford fantastically and did an excellent job. And Craig was actually the closer of the day, so he was the last speaker of the event. And he did a fantastic job, really kind of speaking passionately about education and the need to maybe shift some of our assessment practices at the state level. So he did a great job. Second, today was a big event in the Milford Public Schools. We had the School Day Games, which was, it's a Special Olympics event. It's one of the best events we have during the year. We have hundreds of athletes, best buddies, teachers, community members, all kind of supporting different athletic activities. And we hold it here at Milford High School. And it's always kind of a highlight of, you know, the Special Olympics calendar, the special education calendar, and the Milford Public Schools calendar. So I want to thank, you know, Jen Wallace and a number of other people for organizing and supporting it. We got members of the Milford Fire Department were there today, members of the Milford Police Department, and a number of other volunteers. So it was just a fantastic event. And then just two more quick shout-outs. Recently, we had Brookside's Got Talent, which was a great event for Brookside Elementary School, very well attended, as well as the Woodland Musical. So we always have a ton of things going on across the Milford Public Schools. So thank you.
I'd also like to add in that I was able to, and some other members were as well, to attend the Stacy Middle School Jazz Concert last night, and I'm glad you're here. This is Angelina. They did a fantastic job as usual under the direction of Nadine Pomeroy and Mr. Sami Ajow. So kudos to the middle schoolers, and high schoolers actually, who were there as well. And we had a number of high school students who jumped in and took spots where they were needed with the middle school students, and it was a very nice collaborative event. All right. With no more announcements, we will move on to invitation to speak. Are there any members of the audience who are here to speak with us tonight? Mr. Dulek, welcome.
Thank you. All right. Justin Dulek, 18 Mechanic Street here in Milford. I just want to start by thanking both Mr. Consigli and Dr. McIntyre for being so responsive to my emails over the last week or so. I may have lost the election, but I intend to be quite the gadfly going forward. But while I was on the campaign trail, I did hear a couple stories that I'd like to share with you. On a couple occasions, I was out at Stacy Middle School and Memorial Elementary School during drop-off, and I had a chance to have a conversation with the crossing guards there. And they both shared pretty severe safety concerns with me regarding the painting of the crosswalks up there, specifically the one, I forget which street Memorial's on, but going from the town park across the road. And then they also want additional street signage, if at all possible, especially on Congress Street. I almost saw Cisco get plowed down when he was in the middle of the street and a car didn't see him in the middle. I can't imagine if there were children actively crossing at that time, what could have happened. But they also requested additional signage that lights up if at all possible to try and really get drivers' attention, because right now, they're not paying attention to the signs that are by Memorial and there's just no signage on Congress Street whatsoever as you're approaching the town park and the intersection for Stacy. So I'm not sure what power you guys have to make phone calls and get that stuff done, but whatever you can do, I think will be greatly appreciated in the best interest of our students.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
So I think it's always the highlight of these meetings when we're able to showcase a student and situations that happen in our schools and especially those situations that end up having a happy ending. So I believe we're sharing kind of a situation right now that probably had people feeling quite nervous, that resulted in some quick action and a very favorable ending. So Mrs. Angelina, would you like to come up and talk with us a little bit along with Logan? Hi, Logan. And is Mrs. Sally, you're Mrs. Sally, would you come up, please, too? Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for inviting us.
You're welcome.
So we're with the man of the hour, for sure. It's nothing more joyous than when you talk about transfer of learning and what the Milford Public Schools, I think, should be commended for. This is, I would think, probably one of the best examples that, as principal, I could ever give in my 14 years as principal and 19 years as an administrator. When you talk about what Logan did for up here during the lunch period, his friend was choking and he didn't think twice. He got up and he did the Heimlich maneuver immediately and saved his friend's life. And when people were asking him about it, of course, his peers were so proud of him, really gave him tons of accolades. I think you can see he's very humble on the side of me and he's such a lovely young man. I think the coolest thing is when someone asked him, "How did he learn how to do that?" He said, "I learned that in health class." And that's when I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Sally, because I think she does go above and beyond to really give the students things that they will be able to use in their real life, whether it's prevention against bullying, making healthy decisions about what you eat, how to take care of your body, how to interact socially with your friends. And I mean, I hear "staying alive, staying alive," remember that one, right? They're doing the CPR, and part of that was also the Heimlich maneuver. So at this time, I would like to publicly commend not only Logan for his speedy thought process in saving his peer, but I also like to publicly commend Mrs. Sally for taking the time to really give each of her students a very important life skill. So no further ado, I'd like to share the floor with Mrs. Sally, who really made all this happen, besides our man, Logan.
Thank you for having me here to accept recognition for this, but it really goes to Logan. When I was hired, Miss Angelina, I had asked if I could bring a first aid curriculum to Stacy that would allow the kids practical application. And to be honest, without her support, I would have never been able to teach this. She, I had one kind of a blue man, mannequin. He has a blue face, it's my own. And that's all I would have had to teach the students. And she supported me in purchasing six mannequins so that the children and the students are able to perform hands-only CPR, which statistically has shown that it brings many people who are suffering from a cardiac arrest situation back to life and gives the EMTs time to get there. The other piece of it was to purchase a Heimlich vest, and I was going to bring it this evening, but I didn't know if I should, so I didn't. But if you go on my Twitter account, there is a gentleman and two young students performing it, so it's there. But without her support, I wouldn't have been able to purchase those through the school and then utilize those with the students. And the students, you know, they take it very seriously. I had two parents pass away, one of which from a heart attack. And so although the dummies are, you know, they're mannequins and they're kind of funny looking, and one of them has a blue face, they take it very seriously and they realize that it is a life and death matter. And to know that Logan took what he learned a year ago and kept that in his knowledge bank to then act upon it a year later, and then maybe again in the future, just as a teacher, makes someone feel that, you know, there is a reason for the practicality in what we teach, not just the memorization piece of teaching, which I sometimes feel we get a little wrapped up in.
Can you talk a little bit about the vest, so everyone understands what it is?
Sure. The vest is an apparatus where you put over and you lock it in, and then there is an airway that's to emulate the esophagus. And when the student goes behind, there is a video we watch, and there are steps that they walk through. And they are asked to bend over, keeping the person parallel to the ground, and they support them with their hand and their leg, and they give five back blows. If that doesn't work, they typically are taught to then find the navel, go two inches above with their wrist, making sure they have a protrusion with their thumb, and they give inward upward thrusts. And those inward upward thrusts are typically what people think of with the Heimlich, and that gets the item dislodged. And a little yellow piece of foam flies out. And so the kids actually visualize the apparatus, and it is just a fabulous tool versus just doing it on a mannequin and pretending you see something fly out. So it's been very beneficial with the students and, you know, they giggle, but after they see me, how serious I am, they stop giggling because they realize that it is a life and death matter. And I have to say thank you to you and your quick action. It transferred through every student at Stacy from sixth through eighth grade, so I thank you for that.
Awesome job. I mean, I come here every year, Chappie gives me the CPR, all the defibrillator classes. I have to do it every year because I don't think I'll remember it. But you, a year later, you remember how to do this. I think that's amazing, and you just jumped into action, probably didn't care about your own lunch that you were eating at the time or whatever, but I give you a lot of credit for that. That takes a brave person to do something like that. So good for you. Good for you.
Thank you.
Any other members? Jen?
I just, Logan...
I'm blown away by it. I'm so impressed. As Mr. Hallery said, just a level of bravery and selflessness and jumping in and wanting to help someone just speaks volumes, so, so proud of you.
Thank you.
And I'm, thank you so much for bringing the curriculum to Milford.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations as well. And I don't know if anybody realizes how, in a high-stress situation like that, that not everybody can think clearly and perform. Some people will freeze unintentionally, and you clearly have that resolve to act quickly and think clearly, so I'm just very impressed and want to let you know my appreciation for what you did.
Thank you.
You have members?
I've had the pleasure to know Logan and Sam for quite a number of years.
So it's certainly a proud moment from my side, too, just knowing you for so long. And, you know, you're the quiet kid in the corner sometimes, and you jump right into action, so I think, you know, the entire community's very proud. I guess I have to ask Mom and Dad, when he came home from school, did he say anything? Or did you find out from somebody else? Because knowing how, you know, Logan's kind of a pretty quiet kid.
He got texted.
You got, okay.
Dad, he did this.
So excellent, so good, so...
He didn't use a phone.
They didn't use a phone, but, you know.
He's absolutely lying.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
He was outside the building.
That's all right.
Yeah. I'm glad.
Good, because I'm glad that you're proud of yourself, too, because not only are we proud of you, but that you're proud of yourself for what you did is very important, this whole thing, so it's a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Logan. Just amazing to hear this story. We're really proud of you as a district. You've represented Milford really well and speaks to your own personal character as well. And thank you to Miss Sally for bringing this curriculum, like you said, and Mrs. Angelina as well for supporting it. It's wonderful to be able to teach our students in middle school these life skills that are just so important now, that they can use now and later in life, forever. So thank you very much.
Could I just ask, Logan, you might have mentioned this, I'm sorry, how did you know that the other student was in distress? What were the signals that you saw?
He had, his face was growing red and he was trying to get something out of his throat.
And was it another student right at your table or was it at a different table?
Right next to me.
Okay. And so was it a friend of yours?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I can just only reiterate what my colleagues have said to both you and Mrs. Sally and Mrs. Angelina for bringing that to Stacy Middle School. Your actions are those that you'll remember for the rest of your life, and clearly so will the other student and his family. Dr. McIntyre, did you want to say something yet?
So Logan, you and I have never met before, but I have talked about you. Actually, this morning, I was speaking with the deputy fire chief, and he was talking about how he and all the firefighters were talking about your heroic act. And so, and similarly with the police department. So they're all talking about how, like, in the moment, and I know the other members have mentioned this, but in the moment, a lot of things can happen, and you just jumped into action and did the exact right thing. And the deputy fire chief was talking about how impressed he was by your actions, and he wanted me to share that with you today. So thank you. And, you know, it makes me proud to have you as one of our students in the Milford Public Schools, so thank you.
Thank you.
So Logan, we have a little token of appreciation for you tonight.
Want to take a picture?
You get your very own cell phone pop socket with a cellphone that you do not use in school. And congratulations.
Let's have a sit-down, take a quick picture, too.
Okay.
Before... Mom and Dad, you want to jump in or you want to take the picture?
Oh, I'll take the picture.
All right. Here, Logan, right over here, buddy. Miss Sally, jump in.
Please.
Miss Angelina.
I feel like I didn't do any, probably.
Yeah, thank you.
Except you saved me a lot of running that day, buddy.
All right, good?
Thank you. Sorry.
Great, we'll tell you later. Great.
Thank you. Oh, thank God. My pleasure, honestly.
Congratulations, buddy.
Ah, what a good brother. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Good night.
You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah. Come on in.
Your card's over. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So the next order of business is school committee superintendent operating protocols for 2019, 2020. These are a set of protocols that I think we put together several years ago, and I think it's a practice that many school committees use, which I think we're all aware of, is even though we have two members tonight, you're continuing and returning members, so you should be familiar with these. So what I looked at and kind of highlighted, just kind of those big titles and bold really stood out to me in terms of the way that we've all agreed over time that we will operate as a committee, and it would be my expectation, and I assume that of all of us, when we sign this document, that this is the way that we commit to doing business moving forward. So just to highlight the top one, demonstrate professional and collegial relationships with one another, dedicating ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication, and supporting the educational welfare and well-being of all students. And I think these are very much in line with the way that we have operated as a committee. And I can personally say, as a somewhat veteran member of this particular committee, this has been how we have been functioning, and that, I believe, is why we have a very healthy operating group here. This may be a good time for me to suggest and hope that I would have the committee's support with this moving forward, that Jim and I will be working very closely together. So my vision of how the chair position will work will be one of considerable collegiality and collaboration. And I know that one thing that I'll be very interested in doing is ensuring that we have strong communication among the committee, from our central office admin to all of us as members, and making sure that we continue with the practice of really chair and vice chair working very, very well together. In terms of things like our personal agendas and things like that, that I'm really proud to say that that's really never been anything I've witnessed on this committee in the time that I've served here, and I expect that that's the way that we'll continue. So are there any comments or anything that stands out to people, anything that you think we need to discuss, revisit, or clarify?
I think it speaks for itself. I mean, we seem to be following it pretty well the last couple of years we've had it, so I don't think we need any changes.
Any other members?
No, I'd agree, and I just, I guess I just want to, you know, point out that when Mike Walsh was here during my first term serving, he really brought the, as chair, he really brought the vice chair into work more closely day-to-day and week-to-week with him, and I think that's a very strong practice that I'm glad to see will continue.
Thank you. Any others? All right. So with that, I'll pass this to my right, and we can all sign it, and then we can send it back. All right. So moving on from protocols to our school committee operational goals, and developing a set of goals is a little bit different than our operating practices. Our operating practices simply are the way we kind of function as a collective body and some of our values and things that we're committed to. And our operating protocols, excuse me, our operational goals are really some of the things that we hope to accomplish in the course of any one given year. So Laura, I know that you and Meg have really taken the lead on this, and you've done really an outstanding job. Would you like to just kind of summarize a little bit and share out for us where we are with that?
So I kind of just summarized, I wrote down some comments, just so I don't forget anything, but we'd like to kind of update the committee and the public on how we're doing on these goals, and these are goals that we set last month, and we'll look to kind of reevaluate and modify these goals annually. So our goals are divided into three main areas. There's the long-range planning, student achievement, and then collaboration and communication. So the update on the long-range facilities planning. Two community forums were held in March, and the second one was very well attended by the public. I think we've mentioned this at a prior meeting. Dr. McIntyre has also sent out the online long-range planning surveys out to families via email. Anyone in the community is also, in the community is also encouraged to complete that, so we welcome your feedback. So please contact Dr. McIntyre if you didn't receive the link to the survey and are interested in filling it out. The survey is in process and being added to the district website as well for easier access, so we're going to do that as well. And this part of our long-range planning goal has been completed. Also, in relating to this, the long-range facilities planning, we're actively working So, please contact Dr. McIntyre if you didn't receive the link to the survey and are interested in filling it out. The survey is in process and being added to the district website as well for easier access. So, we're going to do that as well. And this part of our long-range planning goal has been completed. Also, in relating to this, the long-range facilities planning, we're actively working on other categories or other goals within this category, including meeting with selectmen and other town officials, on also updating our long-range planning timeline. We will also review the safety protocols and procedures as part of the principals' presentations here in May. So, that's long-range planning. The update for student achievement. We are below the state average for the per-people spending, and so the committee continues to advocate for increase in funds to support students' needs. We have met, um, at least three times with the education subcommittee of the finance committee since the last update on these goals, which was last month. An update on communication and collaboration, which is the third part of our goals for this year. The Milford School Committee is pleased to announce that it will begin holding office hours in order to provide community members an opportunity to connect with members of the school committee in an informal setting. So, all residents are invited to attend these office hours. And our first office hour has been scheduled for April 30th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Milford Town Library in the Granite Room with Megan and myself. We anticipate that the next one will be scheduled in May in the evening to, um, for community members who maybe, who work during the day and have a conflict with mornings. And if any commi-, um, committee member here tonight would like to participate in these office hours, um, please let me know, and we'll kind of work, work into like some kind of rotation. And then, this month, a new chairperson is now Jen, thank you, will be reorganizing some of the subcommittees. So, policy, budget, marketing, the long-range planning. So, once that's been done, our subcommittees will finalize their primary goal for the year. So, that was a lot, but I just kind of summarized where we are.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that.
Does anyone have any questions?
I think the way you and Megan have taken charge in this is excellent. I think it's going to be, I think it's just going to help us all better.
Yeah, and I think what, kind of to your point about the subcommittees, I think each new year is a good chance to review what are our current subcommittees, um, kind of have an open discussion about what subcommittees are still needed. And are there any that we need to add? Is everyone satisfied with the committees that they're currently serving on? Are people looking for a change? And we'll figure out a way to distribute those equitably. So, we can put that on the agenda, um, either for the next meeting or the one after that, and we'll look at.
I just realized I forgot one thing. Can I add?
Sure, of course.
One other goal has been completed that I want to highlight. Um, the meeting packets, including all the hard copy documents that are provided during the meetings, can now be found online for all community members. So, they have been added to the school committee webpage that's on the district site, so those are now available to the public. Um, and that piece of the goal is done. So, I want to highlight that.
Also, um, Laura, did you mention how you're going about advertising some of the office hours, and how the public, if they're not listening tonight, will be aware?
Yep. So, um, we did contact the radio and the newspapers, so local media. Um, and then we did make a flyer as well, and so those are going to go up in some of the town buildings. So, town hall, library, um, town hall, library, oh, in the senior center.
Thank you.
Yep, and through social media as well.
And I'm sending survey information also right now as I'm coming to the apartment for the office hours.
That'd be great. Yeah, wonderful, thank you.
Great, thank you again to you and Meg for all of your work on that.
Sure.
I think you're going to help keep us structured and moving in the right direction and making forward movements.
So, another update will be the first meeting of the month, so in May.
All right. Um, next we have a report of the superintendent of schools, so I will turn the floor over to Dr. McIntyre.
Thank you. So, it's actually a nice segue from Laura's conversation, because I want to talk about kind of three things tonight. Academics, demographics, and community partnerships. And, I gotta do both at the same time. So, the three things that our focus are, what are some of the strategies for increasing achievement and growth in mathematics, English language arts, and science? And some of this will be repetitive for the committee, but I wanted to just kind of bring it forward one more time. In terms of demographics, what are some of our challenges and who is in our student body? And finally, what community organizations and businesses are we currently partnering with to support student learning? So, the first one is initiatives supporting math achievement, growth, and learning. And we have a robust math intervention program from grades one through eight. We have implemented a program called ST Math at Woodland Elementary School. We have a new math MCAS course supporting students in grades nine and 10 at Milford High School. This year, we're piloting interim assessments, both I-Ready and STAR 360, with the goal of which is to make a decision for next year which, which interim assessment platform will be, will best meet the needs of the Milford Public Schools. We have instructional coaching happening, both at the K-2 and Woodland levels. We have co-teaching for English learners and algebra in nine through, or, English learners in general education, algebra in nine through 12. We're developing common interim assessments for Algebra I and Geometry at the high school level. We're implementing a program called ADAM, which is an adaptive diagnostic assessment of mathematics. And this is specifically for students enrolled in the intervention courses. And again, this is for, to provide teachers with immediate, um, feedback so they can provide the best course of intervention for students. There's the Stacy Succeeds After-School Program, which I believe is, is beginning now, um, for the math MCAS. We have this, the spring 2019 implementation of the math committee to examine alignment, instructional practices, curriculum, and assessment practices. Craig, do you want to speak to that just kind of quickly?
Yeah, we just, um, we just put out a survey to all the, um, math teachers across the district. So, so far, we have about sixty-five responses. Um, so, a few more to go. And then, um, once we get that information, we're going to use that information to form a cre-, um, committee and take a look at what we got from the, um, from our survey data and, and kind of develop a plan on, um, what to tackle first in this, um, in our survey data, which included all of these things that you just mentioned.
Yep. And that's, that's really the truly new thing that we haven't talked about yet. Development of common assessments generally, which includes our work with MCIA and just general common assessments for courses, as well as data-driven curriculum evaluation review. And what that means is, um, we do this in a, in a few different ways, and it's becoming more robust with the interim assessments. We look at MCAS data for trends and patterns over time, but we're also using the interim assessments two to three times a year, depending on the grade level for this year, and three times a year going forward in the future, to be able to make adjustments, um, you know, mid-course, as opposed to at the beginning of the year, um, after we've reviewed the MCAS data and, and made some adjustments.
One, uh, can we go back one? Excited to announce that, um, we just received grants for, um, Brookside and Memorial to get ST Math. So, yeah, we've been looking for, we've, we wrote them last year. And we didn't quite make the criteria. We got one, but not the other. But, this year, we wrote them again, and we got them for both. So, next year will be ST Math, um, K to five.
I wasn't sure if that was, uh, ready for prime time yet.
It's ready.
All right, good to know.
Don't worry about it.
And just to, those are big grants. Those aren't grants that are worth five thousand, ten, those are in the dozens of thousands of dollars to provide those programs to our students, so that's a huge coup for us.
And it's great because it's repetitive over time, so it's, it's kind of a commitment from the company and the, and the foundation, so it's fantastic. So, initiatives supporting ELA achievement, growth, and learning. Reading with Colors, we've talked about quite a bit here. That's been incredibly successful. Just like math intervention, we have a very well-developed reading intervention program, kindergarten through grade eight. We're also piloting the interim assessments for ELA, both in I-Ready and STAR 360. We have instructional coaching, and where the instructional coaching comes into play more for ELA is they're actually running guided reading PLCs, professional learning communities, at the K through two level. So, it's focused work with not just individual coaching, but with groups of teachers. Co-teaching model with special education and general education at the high school. Um, implementation of DORA, which is the ELA equivalent of ADAM, um, which is Diagnostic Online Reading Assessment for ELA intervention classes. And again, these are for just the students who are receiving intervention. It's not broadly. So, if your child is not receiving DORA or ADAM, they may not be receiving the intervention services at the middle school. Development of common assessments, and again, the same data-driven curriculum evaluation and review. If we shift to science, um, we've got Project Lead the Way course implementation now in grades three through 12. We're getting very positive reviews of the two courses that have been added at the high school, and we're going to be looking to expand that programming in the future. Um, we're having co-teaching with EL, uh, English learners and general education, the science classes. Um, MCIA performance assessments are happening at the middle school level. And do you want to talk about that at all, Craig?
Uh, it's in science, yeah. Um, it's actually, I think it's sixth grade, too.
Is it sixth grade, six, seven, and eight?
I think so. Well, our eighth grade and our sixth grade are, are part of, um, the overall coaching. They're receiving coaching, I think it's quarterly, so, uh, every few weeks or so, somebody from MCIA, it's actually the Center for Collaborative Education, somebody comes out, meets with our teachers, and, and helps them create these performance assess them, assessments, and runs through protocols to make sure that what the, the tasks that the teachers are creating go back to the, um, standards that they are try, actually trying to assess. Um, that's part of it. There's other pieces of it, too. But, our seventh grade is involved in a pilot where all the seventh grade students are taking the same performance assessment. And then, in the other six districts, there are students in seventh grade taking, um, the same performance assessment. And they're going to come back together and see how our students did versus students in the other districts. And then they're going to also compare whether or not, say, I, I'm just going to use, I'm not exactly sure if this is how it scored, but say our teacher scores something of five, did teachers in Revere also score something like that of five, uh, or three, or two, or one. So, um, they're going to calibrate the scoring, too. That's kind of the next piece of MCIA, um, just, just to see our teachers scoring student work similarly. So, that calibration piece. Um, so, that's exciting for us, too. And then, um, we are looking to scale up for next year. Um, are we, are you just want to talk about science?
Yeah, you can talk about the K, you can talk about the K-2 thing, too.
Uh, well, scale up at K-2, which I thought, I think we've talked about before. There are eighty-something, eighty-two schools in the, in the state that do not have any kind of accountability system attached to them, because they don't have MCAS. Uh, MCAS starts in third grade. We have two schools in Milford that fall into that category. And the federal government is pushing on, um, the state government to put some kind of accountability system in place for the K-2 schools. So, MCIA, um, is working with, um, DESI to create this performance assessment system, um, for the K-2 schools. So, very shortly, we're going to have a bunch of teachers and, at the K-2 level, going through the same coaching for performance tasks at the K-2 level. But then, as far as scaling up at the, at the middle school, I know that the middle school, the, the teachers that have been involved in the performance assessment, uh, there's five or six of them, have really taken to it, and they like the way that those assessments feel. Students are able to show a lot more than what they could on just a paper pencil test. And they've shared that with other members of their teams, so now we have teams of teachers that are interested in, in getting involved with MCIA. So, I really like, I think, just that coaching and, and talking about performance tasks as a way of assessing students, I think that's starting to change practice at the middle school, and I'm really pleased with the way that's headed, so. I don't know if anybody had questions about that.
All right, so, um, we've, we've shared this slide before, but, um, I think it's important to note that there's two-hundred-and-twenty-four high schools in the state of Massachusetts, and only thirty-one of the two-twenty-four have seen an increase of eight percent or more of students who are economically disadvantaged between 2016 and 2018. And if you look, the vast majority of schools, the, the performance is declining. So, if you look at like all the schools where the, the line is going to the left, are schools that are declining in performance. And if you look at the right, there's, um, a smaller number of schools who are showing improvement. And of those schools, Milford High School is showing the most improvement, an increase of thirteen percent.
Okay, this, these from our, basically based on our MCAS scores?
Yeah, actually, this is the, um, this is the accountability status.
So, it has that form.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It's MCAS.
Exactly. So, it's like MCAS attendance, graduation rates, uh, there's a few other pieces that are built in. So, we've improved thirteen points in the last three school years. For the most part, districts who've seen the same kind of demographic shift have declined for the most part. And we've, we're more than, we've increased more than double of any other high school that's kind of in a similar situation. So, I think that's positive news. I think we're making a nice progress at the high school. So, I just want to highlight that, that work that was happening there.
And would you say that everything that we highlighted on the first few slides, is that kind of what you're using to attribute that growth?
Yeah, and I, I think some other work, too, but I wanted to highlight some of the different things we're doing. But I think Writing with Colors in particular has had an enormous impact. I believe the course that's going to be a full implementation during this school year is going to have a positive impact on the, you know, mathematics scores. I don't think it's going to be as dramatic as Writing with Colors, but I think it is going to have a positive impact. So, I'm not anticipating the same rate of growth going forward, but I think we should see some more improvements.
I also think that the addition of, um, an associate principal who, who doesn't necessarily have student, have the responsibility of discipline and can get in with teachers and meet with groups of teachers and talk about instructional practices and expectations, I think we're going to see, um, I think that's going to help also.
Um, our, our two biggest issues impacting student learning are poverty and, and mental health. And I want to kind of talk about what that looks like, kind of in, in Milford, and how it shifted over the last several years. If you look at, um, uh, sure, I'm not running from the same computer that I'm, I'm clicking from, so sometimes there's a little bit of, a little bit of a lag. If you look at our demographic data percentages, um, for high needs, we're slightly higher than the state. But this is, this is a little deceiving. Um, if you look at per-pupil expenditure, we're about eighteen hundred dollars below, um, the, the state average. If you look at English learners, we're about a third above, poverty about a point or two above, language other than English about a third above, and students with disabilities were about three points, three percentage points lower. And this is the, just the, the pure percentage of students. So, so what I did is, I, I looked at, um, not just where we stand percentage-wise, but percentile-wise compared to the rest of the state. And so, basically the same numbers, and some of the data isn't available for every year. But for, for high needs compared to other districts, we rank in the seventy-second percentile in eighteen nineteen, which means we jumped, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't change it. There it is. Um, which, which means we jumped one percentage point in, in, in the last, one percentile point in the last year. So, that means that twenty-eight percent of districts have a higher percentage of high needs. Seventy-one percent have a lower percentage of high-needs students. If you look at per-pupil expenditure, we don't have eighteen or nineteen, or even seventeen or eighteen data. The last data we have is 2017, and we fell in the twenty-fourth percentile. What that means is that seventy-six percent of districts are spending more per pupil than Milford. Twenty-three percent are spending less. I think we're two forty-six out of three twenty-three in terms of per-people spending. If you look at the EL percentiles, we fall in the eighty-seventh percentile. Again, same thing. Thirteen, twelve percent of districts fall above, eighty-six below, economically disadvantaged, sixty-eight below, thirty, thirty-one above, thirty above, language other than English, similar, and then students with disabilities were, were slightly below. So, if you look at, if you compare the two, like the percentage, we're close in high needs, we're close in, um, economically disadvantaged, it tells you that there's a concentration of districts that have a very high percentage of either economically disadvantaged students or, um, you know, English learners or students with special needs. And, and we're kind of falling into those categories, and we've actually increased by twenty percent in the last five years. So, our high-needs percentage has gone up about twenty percent in the last five years. So, if you look at, um, like this is, this is data, this is data from, currently, from Brookside and Memorial. And, um, you know, you look at our EL percentage, at Memorial is almost forty-four percent. At Brookside, it's thirty-five percent. But our EL students have a very high concentration of, um, you know, free and reduced lunch as well. It's, it's nearly eighty percent.
Can you just define what high needs is?
So, high needs, yeah, sure. High needs is, um, any combination of economically disadvantaged, English learner, or students with disabilities, or some combination thereof. So, you're not repeat counted. So, if you had a child who was an English learner as well as had a disability, they would count as one towards the high-need percentage.
Thank you.
And you can see like our EL population, which we, I know Jen or Janie has shared this numerous times, but it's, it's basically, it's basically tripled, nearly tripled in the last, uh, in the last about eight years. And we've done a lot in terms of staffing to address that across the district, both for, um, pu-, push-in teachers, pull-out teachers, and, and co-teachers.
Yeah, it's about fifty kids higher now, too.
Yeah, it's probably closer to seven sixty.
Yeah.
Today. This, this was from November.
Yeah.
So, we've, we've gained about fifty-five students since November, who are, who are English learners. So, the, the next piece, and this is enrollment trends, if you, if you look at sixteen through eighteen, you can see that our, our enrollment has, hasn't shifted a great deal. And historically, that's, you know, I think the, the running line or joke is we've added a student a year since nineteen sixty, which is, which is not too far from the truth. It's fluctuated a little bit here and there, but we went from forty-one thirty-one to forty-one eighty-seven to forty-one eighty-six. This year, right now, we have four thousand three hundred and seventy-one students, and today, that, that was the beginning of March. Today, we're at forty, four thousand three hundred and eighty-two. So, we've jumped even, so we're almost.
Still counting.
Yeah, and we've got thirty-six-ish students in the Family Resource Center who are going to be enrolling at some time in the next couple of weeks. So, we're up about two hundred, almost two hundred students exactly as of today from 2018, which is unusual for us, very unusual. We're probably up somewhere between fifteen and twenty choice in students, so it's not really driven by like a big jump in choice in students. Um, we, we have just a greater student population overall, and something we've really got to watch, because... you know, it's gonna have an impact on class size, it's gonna have an impact on, even our long-range facilities plan potentially, if this becomes a trend that happens for, for a few years because we'd have to look at, um, you know, what are we gonna do with the K two, you know? How, how are we gonna configure things and what are we gonna do? It'll have an impact on that. One year is not a trend or a pattern, so I wanna be, I wanna be kind of very clear about that. But I, I look at the historical data and, like, the biggest jumps we've typically had have been like the sixteen to seventeen where it's been about fifty students. And that could go up or down. We've never really seen a jump like this of, you know, by the end of the year, it's gonna probably be over two hundred students.
And we have to be careful too with the new buildings that they're, you know, pro- housing developments that they're building too. We don't know the influx of students there either.
Correct. So, I, I just wanna make sure that, I'm gonna bring these numbers up regularly because I think it's something we have to watch. Because when we formulated the budget this year, I wasn't anticipating, I don't think anybody in this room was anticipating a jump of two hundred students because we start that process in kind of October, November, when we had the principals start to deliver their information. So this is, this is an unusual occurrence for us. And again, it could be an aberration. And we, we looked at a lot of different kind of wa- like, we said, geez, we've got these two big classes in seventh and eighth grade right now, but we've had them since they've been in kindergarten and we haven't had the jump. So something else is happening. Um, it could, it could recalibrate when those two classes graduate, that, that's a possibility. But we'll, we'll, we'll have to wait and see. We're a little ahead of the game for kindergarten registration than we typically are right now, but not so, so far off that I'd say, gosh, we're really seeing a big influx of kindergarteners too. But again, it's, it's something we're gonna watch, so I just wanna make sure. I think every few months, I'm gonna kinda give you guys a, like, a, a population update, if, if there's kinda shifts. Because I think it's important that you have a, a good understanding of that, because it does impact personnel. Alright. So the next thing I wanna talk about, we, I don't think we've done enough of this and I wanna do more of it with the committee, is, um, talking about all the partnerships we have with outside organizations. And I just kind of undertook an exercise a couple of weeks ago, is I asked every administrator in the district to think about who they're partnering with, and we kinda created a list. And we have more than sixty-four community and business partners, as well as seventeen kind of governmental PTO and, um, you know, kind of, uh, kind of lo- local and state government groups that we also work with pretty closely. So that ends up being over eighty groups that we kind of partner with beyond just like, I, I would say this is beyond, like, um, surface-level partnership. And, and I'm gonna talk about a few of them. I'm not gonna obviously talk about all eighty-plus, unless Chris would like me to.
If you feel it's best use of our time.
Um, but what, what they do is they provide a number of functions. It's oversight, professional development, support for students and families, grants or funding, programming, enrichment opportunities, internships, public relations, exposure and marketing, and safety and security. And if you look at just this list right here, and it's, it's, it's pretty extensive. And we have Milford TV with us tonight. We do a lot of work with Milford TV. They, they, um, film our athletic events, our meetings. We do a, a number of, like, promotional and, and newsworthy activities with them and they've been a great, a, a, a great partner. If you look at organizations like The Doubletree, uh, Atlas Travel, Milford Federal, they serve as partners, Milton Cat, they serve as, at DMC. They serve as partners with our business and banking program, our hotel and hospitality program. You throw Waters Corporation in there and, and it's an internship site. And we do a number of things with the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation that they provide programming for our students, professional development for our teachers. Um, the Hakamak area Y M C A. We do the, uh, summer lunch program with them and a number of, uh, both after-school, morning, and enrichment programs across the board. This is just a, eh, kind of an extended list. Uh, Framingham State, LaSalle, Mass Bay Community College. We work with all three of those organizations for early college dual enrollment. NEAS provides oversight at the high school level. If you look at, um, the next slide, there's, eh, there's a number of other organizations where we either have relationships where we do internships, a number of relationships where we build counseling, uh, relation, um, connections with the new, um, S E L director and social worker. We, we've got a number of interns coming in next year from the Boston College School of Social Work, as well as, uh, Salem State, which is gonna provide a tremendous service. If you look at, um, eh, you know, government booster groups and PTOs that support the Milford Public Schools, you know, I mentioned the police and fire earlier today, but both the police and fire were out on the field for the Special Olympics School Day Games today. And the special operations team was running the events with the students, which I thought was fantastic. The PTOs provide tremendous programming for our students. Parents for Music is an incredible group that allows the, the music, uh, students to go on trips and participate in, um, competitions and performance groups. Uh, again, police and fire come in and do trainings, they read to our students. Um, we, you know, the Worcester County District Attorney's Office just provided, um, uh, a, a big donation to the after-prom, uh, committee. So there's, there's tons and tons and tons of connections, as well as the booster, uh, the sports boosters, you know, similarly for the athletics groups. But it ends up being, uh, over eighty gr- eh, eighty different organizations and I'm sure if I gave this list to a group, we'd probably come up with thirty or forty more very, very easily. So I do wanna kinda bring this up on occasion and thank these groups because, um, we're definitely not on this journey alone. We've got a lot of support and help from a lot of different people, both locally and across the state. And, and they're, and they're critical partnerships and they're really moving, they're really moving our work forward. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you.
Quick question. What groups that are on there, do you figure, are there some, I guess, maybe we can talk to in the future too, but, you know, partnerships that support the, our high needs population, kind of out, maybe outside of our school district, you know? Is there anything on there that you can speak to that, 'cause, you know, I guess we, we continue to talk about the high needs population?
Yeah.
And where, where, where is the support within?
Yeah, so I, I would say, like, this, this slide has a number of groups that are particularly supporting, um, you know, our high needs groups, uh, the Wayside Community Counseling Center, Trauma, U Inc., uh, Riverside, Wayside. Um, a number of these organizations also serve as work sites for high school, um, special need students.
Good.
Eh, you know, I think the Big Y, Men and Drive-In, Honeydew. Um, so I think there's a lot of that happening. If you go, um, I'm just trying to.
See, it's good to go through all eighty of them.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I, I think, I think the list kinda goes-
It's fine, you know, I, I just wanna highlight, you know, again, as we continue to talk about the, the ever-increasing high needs population of our community, that there are also other bridges from our school community to the Milford community that, that we're working, you know, is a collaborative effort, um.
Yeah, I mean, the Milford Area Humanitarian Coalition, um, eh, eh, I think the list kinda goes on and on. I think Gold's Gym has provided memberships to our, our students with disabilities at the high school level. You know, so there's just these fantastic partnerships and some training too, some personal training, which has been great.
Any other members with any questions or comments for Kevin?
Alright, thank you.
I did, I did have one question, sorry. In terms of the student enrollment trends that you talked about, Kevin?
Yeah.
So, um, I assume that when we were up two hundred students this year, that was nothing that we would've seen in the projections from NESDEC?
No, actually, the NESDEC projections, I think they go out either, I forget if it's ten or twenty years 'cause I don't have it in front of me, but I think they're saying that we'd be net down, what is it, ten students? Over ten years, yeah, so we'd be down ten students over ten years. So, again, that's been pretty consistent with-
Right.
-what we've seen historically. Like, you could, I think a reasonable person could come to that conclusion.
Right.
I'm very concerned we're up two hundred students.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they're, if this is a good time, maybe you've already done this, but to bring a rep from NESDEC back in and see if we can kinda reassess.
Well, yeah, and, and if I, if I can.
Why that happened.
Yeah, yeah, jump in, correct.
A lot of what NESDEC bases their projections on are birth rates, right? So they project out birth rates and a lot of what we're seeing is, are not, have, don't have anything to do with birth rates, they're all movement.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Right, so my question in NESDEC would be, so when you have communities like ours where we have some level of transient population and students who may not be born in this, you know, and be registered in town hall, how do they kind of account for that when they know the demographics have changed?
I'll call Mr. Kennedy.
Okay.
Yeah, he loves to do that, yeah. Just, I think it would be helpful, especially as we prepare for what our class sizes are going to look like and if we're, if, if this is an anomaly this year, or if this is what we're going to see moving forward.
And that's, that's what we're really wrestling with, 'cause we've, we've seen, like, typically we've seen, like, our churn rate has gone up and then the churn rate is basically the number of students that enter and the number of students that leave, has been, has been higher the last, like, ten to fifteen years. And for whatever reason, this year, the churn rate is lower and we're just, you know, the students are staying. So, again, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to project out after one year.
Right.
But it's, usually we don't see this, so that's why it's kind of alarming to me.
But, we did talk about that and, and there's some political unrest that's happening in Brazil right now. So I wonder if that clears up at some point, if we'll then see kids and families start moving back. So, I don't know, which is, again, it's hard to predict.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's nearly impossible.
If I can, just going back to what Mr. Kennedy said a little over a year ago when I was, um, sitting in, most of the data that they use comes from our own community, from town planner, from town clerk, and, and like, as you said, birth rates and such, so I don't know that anybody could've foreseen this-
Right.
-this spike.
Yeah, so it's, it's, we're watching it closely. And we'll, we'll keep updating the committee on it because I think it's, it's gonna have an important implication with, with budget, which is a, a big charge of this group.
Have you seen those numbers across the district, or do you see it more affecting, you know, particularly grade levels?
We've seen, I think at the middle and high school level, it's, it's, it's impacted the entire district.
Right.
But we've never had to make, since, in the six years that I've been here, like, mid-year course corrections in terms of how we're configuring classrooms. And we had to do that this year for the first time because we saw a jump. So, you know, if we saw a similar jump next year, it'd be very troubling because, especially like with those two big classes, where we, you know, we made some adjustments with, like, you know, the math courses in, in the eighth grade, and we added sections, I think three or four sections. We had teachers, um, pick up an extra class, like, pick up an extra section this year at the high school.
Yeah, I think the more we can get this information out to people, both ends of the information that you're talking about.
Yep.
Um, both our demographics and how things are changing and also the public, our ability to publicize what's happening, the great things that are happening in the Milford Public Schools. Um, I think that's very impactful for our community to see, hear about, um, and be able to just be very proud of what, what's happening.
Yeah, and, and I think it just, like, it blew me away, like, the one thing, other than the sheer number of new students we've had this year, which I think was shocking, but the, the, the number of partnerships we have, 'cause we've never really, at least to my knowledge, sat down and just said, like, who are we working with? And, you know, and you look at the list and it's pretty impressive. It's higher education, it's nonprofits, it's businesses, it's, you know, local groups that are supporting, you know, our students. And it, it really shows that, like, a school district can never go it alone. And there's a lot of people that are really invested in our success and, and, and supporting the work that we do.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent, and we will receive a report on the mentor program from Mr. Consigli.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna review with, with the committee where we've gone so far this year with mentoring and kinda where we're headed, um, to, as we end this year and move into next year. Uh, first of all, this is really the first year that we've had this three-year program. So, we, in the first, the first year, um, all of our brand-new first-year educators get one-to-one mentors. It's, uh, somebody that's, um, fully vested in our, in our school district, so somebody that's three years or beyond three years. Somebody that's in the school and then somebody that is, we try to get people within their department. Um, clearly, I think that, for obvious reasons with that, 'cause they can help, um, help them the best. Uh, the, the, that first-year program is coordinated by four mentor coordinators. Uh, Paula Muller, who coordinates the K two level. Shannon Roach coordinates the three-five level. Julie Emo coordinates, uh, Stacy. And then Amanda Cunningham coordinates, uh, Milford High School. Last, wh- where we, we're a little different this year than in years past is we, in the years past, we really didn't have a formal training program for our mentors. And this is our first year that we formally trained all of our first-year mentor, uh, all of our mentors for our first-year teachers. And we've gotten some good feedback from the first-year educators and everybody's pretty happy with who they have and, and what we're doing. We're gonna circle back up with our, our mentor coordinators to make sure that they're reaching out to the first-year mentors. Um, and then we're just about to train a whole new crop of, um, of mentors. So, we wanna make sure that as we move forward, if people are getting their first-year educators, they've been trained, so that everybody's kinda on the same page about what it is that we're supposed to be doing with these people, um, when we meet with them. So in the first year, uh, this year for our first year, we have about forty-four new staff members that have been added, which is a pretty big group. It's, it's the, definitely the biggest group that I've had in, in three years. In fact, I think it's more than my second and third group combined. So, um, it's been a little challenging when we meet monthly. So, there's the one piece where they're, they're required to meet with the, um, their mentor once a week. We have a checklist of things that they should be talking about from month to month to month. Um, obviously, they don't have to go down the checklist, but just in case they feel like, hey, jeez, there's something I, I, I really don't have to meet. Oh, yeah, you do, you probably talked about this. Um, but one of the biggest things that we, we see people having questions and concerns about are around the evaluation system. So, um, it's kind of an unwieldy system, so I'm, I'm kinda glad that, that's something that they focus on. Our large group meetings, we meet, like I said, once a month. We've had, we, and typically, we've been in this room, but with forty-four people, it's a little difficult. It gets a little cramped, as you can imagine. So, we've been in the auditorium, which isn't the best place to do any kind of professional development with people. It's, you know, it's an auditorium, so, um, but we've done the best that we could. I've been facilitating them with Lisa Kincaid. Uh, we've had a panel discussion about strategies for supporting Yale students. Um, that was, uh, something that the, the first-year mentor, the first-year educators requested. So we brought in people from the Family Resource Center, we brought in Jen, and they kinda talked about what, what can you do to support Yale students, um, or parents, or what happens if I have to get in touch with a parent and I need a translator, how do I do all those things? So, um, they really appreciated that. And then we had a classroom management session, uh, that was run by Josh Ottlin and Vicky Houston. Uh, it was, the way that we set that up is we had multiple rooms going, so they were kinda moving back and forth between this room, um, the library and another room. So, um, that went well. But the, I think the key to our first-year program is the feedback that we collect from them month to month to month. And it kinda tells, it keeps us on track of where do we need to go as a large group, but where do our mentors need to focus? And then we just get that information out to people. Uh, some of the challenges, um, like I said before, having that many people, it's, it's just making sure that everybody's getting what they need. So I, if we ever have a group again that big, I think I would structure it a little differently and, um, probably break the group up into two or three different groups just to make sure everyone's getting what they need, 'cause with forty-four people, it's just hard. And then, the, the training for mentors, the, the challenging part about training for them is when, when it's like a one-off, when we hire somebody in the middle of the, of the year, it's hard to get those people up to speed. The mentor coordinator has to take that under, um, has to do that on their own, but they don't really have time to do it, so it gets difficult. Um, so, they get the brief overview and then the, the coordinators are checking in from time to time. Alright, so the, the next piece of our mentoring program is the second-year program, the year-two program. And this is the first year that we've partnered with Ashland. Last year, we had a year-two program and we partnered with Mendon Upton. But this year, we're partnered with three districts, uh, two districts. So it's Mendon Upton and Ashland and Milford. All teachers are required to have the fifty hours of mentored, uh, experience beyond the induction year. So that's why we brought in the year-two and the year-three, so that we could get those, those fifty hours. And that's for professional licensure. So, only brand-new teachers really need that. If we have teachers that are veteran teachers that come into our district, this part of the program's optional for them because they don't really need that, the fifty hours. They're granted three professional- Um, they're granted three professional days, anybody in our year-two program, and what we do is we go from, we went from Ashland, then to Mendon Upton, and then the next one's gonna be here, that's gonna be in, on May thirteenth. Uh, what we do in those districts is, well, we, we poll them and s, and kind of ask them what did we want to talk about, so we have a discussion, um, in the morning, say it's about, uh, student discourse or something, um, we talk about that, we talk about best practices, and then we go into classrooms in that district and kind of see it in action. And we, then we come back and we talk about what we saw. Um, so it's a full day of professional development, um, but it, the best piece is they're growing their professional learning network because they're working with people in other districts and kind of seeing how it works outside of Milford. Um, we also have a couple of books that we're reading and we do reflections in between. Um, so the challenges for our second-year program is just coordinating schedules between everybody, um, and making sure that, you know, when we schedule our walkthroughs, the teachers know that we're coming, um, obviously it, it's, it's not good when a teacher, when we just have people showing up in the classrooms and teachers don't know. So, I'm gonna start that process for us right when we get back for, from, um, April vacation, and then we're gonna have people from Mendon Upton and Ashland walking through our, our schools. Um, and then managing the reading and the reflections was a little difficult for us too, with so many people, um, the reading I don't think is so, is the hard part, but the reflections that we ask people to do, because when we ask them to do it, obviously they want feedback on what they're reflecting on, so that's been kind of difficult to manage, uh, but we're keeping up. Uh, our year-three program, that's partnership between myself and Mendon Upton. Um, for the year-three program, we've only done two dates, um, we've done one in the fall, but then we have one coming up in, on May twentieth. Um, and with that one, we really focus a little more on, on some of the nuances about assessment or instructional practices, uh, so we go a little bit more in-depth. Where in the first year and the second year, we're focused more on relationships and, uh, student-teacher relationships and teacher-teacher relationships, now we're really talking about instructional practices. And Mendon Upton people and Milford people are, are kind of talking about what works and what, not what, what's not working. Um, and same kind of thing, we do walkthroughs in Mendon Upton, they do walkthroughs over here. Um, if, challenges of that is there's only two days, it's, it's been really hard to keep the group connected because we did one in the, in the fall and now we have one in the spring and there was nothing in the middle, so it's been just hard to keep the group connected that way. Um, and then I think the other thing is we need to involve more staff besides myself and, um, Maureen, who's in Mendon Upton, so that they get a more wide perspective from, um, schools, from our school and from their school. So, I think improvements are gonna be just bringing other people into the picture. Um, and I think what we should also do is maybe involve some more districts and get a little more, um, diverse too. And then real quick, uh, we also have a administrator mentoring program going on, so there's two ass, new assistant principals. We have two assistant principals that have been mentoring, um, the other assistant principals and they meet, we, they meet weekly as well. And then we have an assistant principal group, which is all the assistant principals in the district, we come together once a month, um, and we just talk about all kinds of things, from expectations at one school to another, um, to communicating with parents, to how do we become better instructional leaders? Um, so we meet for an hour and a half on that. And then we also have, um, my colleague in Mendon Upton and I, we run a quarterly regional assistant principal meeting where we invite assistant principals from kind of across the, the region into our schools, um, and we just, we meet and talk about different things, uh, with that regional group. And that's K to twelve, that group. Um, so next steps, we have a new mentor training coming up for, for some new, um, just to kind of grow our stable of, of mentors, uh, that'll be on May twenty-eighth. Um, we have to plan a celebration for our year-three people, uh, because really, we look at the year-three as kind of a culmination of, of this mentoring program, but not only that, is we need to celebrate the fact that they've gotten professional status now in our district, so we have to kind of plan something out for them. Um, like I said before, looking to expand to other districts and see if other people are willing to partner with us. Um, and then what happens in year four? So we've supported these people in year one, in year two, in year three, now what happens in year four? We just gonna cut ties with them or how can we support them in year four? So, I'm kind of been thinking about how we can incorporate instructional coaching into the mentoring program, so they can get a feel for it, it's not gonna be forced on them, but maybe they could, um, somehow that maybe the instructional coaches could be a piece of it, so they get to know them a little bit and then maybe naturally they would, um, they would gravitate towards that, so, that's our mentoring program. I don't know if anybody has questions?
So can I just say one thing before the committee jumps in? I think Craig is doing an exceptional job with these programs. I think we're doing things, every year it gets better too, and the fact that we have a three-year kind of very robust program is, I don't want to say it's unusual, but I think the quality of the program is extremely high, not only for Massachusetts, but I think for the entire country.
Any comments or questions from the committee?
I just want to say thank you, Craig, it's an exceptional amount of work, I think it's great.
Great direction, great vision, and I look more, I look forward to hearing more, more updates.
Yeah, I just want to say I was, I'm appreciative of the thorough explanation tonight.
Yeah, no, I, I echo, um, what Jim and John stated and, um, also what you mentioned, Kevin, this is, it, I think it is highly unusual to have this level, I don't know what it's like in your district, Laura, but this is, um, at least from what I've seen, this is a highly unusual and robust program to support our newer teachers. And I think, um, we've all heard that the research shows that, you know, in the first couple of years, the new teachers do not always sustain employment because the job isn't what they thought, they didn't have the support that they should have had. I think for someone to be worrying about what to do with a fourth-year teacher and that I don't think we're supporting them enough, that, I think that's pretty extraordinary. And our most valuable resource is teachers and what they're doing in those classrooms each day. And I also applaud you for trying to maximize the, um, facilitation of these groups and looking outside of Milford for how can we really get the best bang for our buck and, and letting teachers see other classrooms, they just don't ever have the opportunity to do that. So affording them that opportunity is a great, great commitment by our district, so thank you for your work with that. All right, Mrs. Perry, I believe we're up to you.
Okay, I have for the committee's approval this evening, a warrant in the amount of six hundred sixty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Someone like to make a motion? By Laura, second by Joe, all in favor?
The second agenda item is a request from our, our Unit A for professional development in the amount of four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and ten cents.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Chris, second by John, all in favor?
The committee also has a list of the latest hires from our previous meeting for your information only. Um, and we do have a request for Memorial School, grade two, to attend a field trip out of state. Uh, the committee has in front of you a, um, explanation how the, uh, field trip does relate to the, uh, school curriculum. The date that they're requesting is for April thirtieth, uh, it is for grade two, and it is to the Museum of Natural History and Planetarium in Providence, Rhode Island.
Before we vote on that approval, because it is an out-of-state field trip, are there any questions or comments about the field trip? Motion, motion to approve, motion by Joe, second by Jim, all in favor?
And that's all this evening.
I just wanted to add also, thank you for the explanation, I think that's something we've been asking for, for a while now, what are these field trips, why are they happening, how do they connect to classroom instruction? So, um, I think if you could share the feedback with, with the building, so this is really helpful for us and for parents. All right, so now we're up to subcommittee updates, um, we did have a budget subcommittee this evening. Is there anyone who would like to give an update on that? I don't know if that's you, Dr. McIntyre, or?
Yeah, I, I can give a quick update. We had a, we had a meeting with the subcommittee of the, the educational
Oh, true.
finance subcommittee on, was it Monday night?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, thank you, Tuesday night, and then we had a follow-up, uh, subcommittee meeting thi, this evening. And we're, we're in the process of kind of looking at feedback from the FinCom Education Subcommittee and, and formulating responses, basically where we are in the process. We anticipate that pace to accelerate over the next couple of weeks, so we can come to and agree upon number.
Do we have any members who, um, had an interaction with their school, um, reports from school liaison or any kind of updates? You know, it's been a busy time for people. And so, Chris or Laura did you?
One of the cultural events that's coming up at Brookside, um, that is nice that they're bringing, in something called Eyes on Owls. Um, so they're getting an opportunity, um, to basically learn about owls, their habitat, what they eat, um, and all this is taking place on April twenty-fourth.
Great. School liaisons is something that we've done differently over the years, we've had them, we haven't had them, we, we've tried different models, so, um, maybe one thing that we can add when we talk about the, um, future agenda items is what is the will of the committee in terms of, did we like this model, um, do we want to go back to a different model? But maybe when we talk about subcommittees and things like that, we can also talk about liaison roles and how the committee would like to see that roll out this year.
I can add that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that brings us conveniently to future agenda items. Chris?
Um, one being, uh, the Milford Police presented to the Board of Selectmen in March, and it was regarding basically of, you know, their focus efforts through various parts of the community, and one being Milford High School, so I just figured, you know, now that they have that dedicated response team to our school, maybe just a, a quick update, um, you know, from the police department, why they have those focus efforts here, how that, uh, team is working, um, within our schools, you know, just from a basic level, so, because obviously we can't drill down into, to what they do day-to-day, but, um, again, just, it was, when I read the news article about the focus staff for the MHS, I figured that it's something that the, the committee should hear, uh, about in more detail of why. Um, also there was a, a recent, uh, Bush report given to the Board of Selectmen, and part of it, if I heard correctly, is how Milford High School students are actually using that in-town bus service for rides to school. So, is that something that we as a committee maybe we need to look at from a busing side of it, of, you know? I know we have certain limits on, on buses, but that's something, again, if, if kids are utilizing in-town buses, you know, do we need to relook at our busing policy just to, to help out certain students to make sure they're, they're getting to school, um, appropriately? Um, also school choice funding, and again, it was just something that, as we go through these warrants, um, I guess, when, when we are pulling from the school choice funding, if we can just make a note of it, um, and then review it, Kathy, you know, just so we know, because I think it comes up right now, it's just as a grant, so I was a little bit confused maybe by that, um, or I wasn't sure if
Actually.
you know, what the best way to go about that, so, we can talk to it in the future.
Absolutely, because, um, I was under the understanding when I print some of those budget sense reports, that it was actually giving you, um, detail and not a summary.
Right.
So I think this month's report, you're gonna see all of the expenses by line item for school choice.
Excellent.
I think it'll be clearer.
Okay.
So let me know if that doesn't, you know, give you a resolve.
Can we handle that one?
Most definitely, then, yeah, I have no problem with it, like you said, it was just, it wasn't quite as clear.
Yeah, it wasn't clear, I agree.
So, if, you can agree with that. And, and the last one, um, I had a few people approach me this week, um, Stacy Middle School School Safety, um, there just seems that, uh, the, the behaviors are ramping up there. I know that we have, um, we are looking at it from a, a budget perspective as far as adding administration, but I don't know if anything that we can do in the short term from this committee-wise uh, to help out just school safety, um, like I said, um, when people approach me, um, about the school safety, um, it's, it's concerning, so.
So one of the things we're doing as part of the, um, school improvement plan and handbook presentations is the principals are all talking about school safety as well. I'm not, I, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but I think, I think we're doing middle school and high school fir, at first, if that's correct, which would be the first or second meeting in May, so if that works, I'd love to have them come in and, and present as part of that.
Definitely, yeah, that's fine, yeah, again, just something to look at.
I think just to piggyback on that, I think that as members, we do have people who come to us periodically with this concern or this issue because they're not exactly sure how to handle it and kind of I go back to what our operating protocols kind of look like, and so, um, you know, I'm hopeful that we're able to talk with people when, if somebody comes to us and says, I have a concern about something at a particular school, that we're able to help direct them, so. I'm not sure, and I, I agree with discussing that in terms of handbook and school improvement plan, and maybe we'll see those things in there.
Well, we're having, we're having every school kind of give a school safety update as part of the, as part of that process.
And I think that's, I think that's really appropriate, I think when, if a parent is feeling like, oh, my child came home and reported such and such, I think we really want to strongly encourage those families to go directly to, whether it's involving a teacher, administration, um, so they can start to kind of get their concerns addressed directly from the school, I think that will have more of an impact than what we can do probably on the floor of this meeting room. So I think we just, we just want to be mindful that part of our roles is really to help people understand, because I think a lot of times people don't, and I think a lot of times people are worried, they're worried about retribution, they're worried about, oh my God, if I open my mouth, what will happen? Um, but I think we want to, we want to move people in the direction and, um, of feeling more comfortable talking to schools about sharing their concerns. But thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you.
All right, any old business, or were there any other future agenda items before we move on to old business?
Nope.
Okay, um, old business, anything that we'd like to revisit, Laura?
Um, I don't know if it's actually a future agenda item or the old business, but we were gonna talk, um, this month, so I just want to make sure it gets on the agenda, um, the update for the honor roll policy at Stacy, is that still on the agenda?
I, I can check, I know it was, I know it was in the mix, I just don't know if it's next, the next one or the one after.
Okay, yeah, and then Megan mentioned the enrichment too, so just making sure.
That's definitely on next, that's on the next, that's on, yeah, that's the next agenda for sure.
Yeah, two weeks, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, that one's for sure.
Can you just remind me, what was the enrichment?
Just, just what are we doing for enrichment for, at, in elementary?
Okay.
I'm, I'm, we're gonna, sorry. We're gonna talk about the enrichment opportunities that we have at each of the schools, aside from Milford High School, because I think there's a lot at Milford High School. Um, but then we're also gonna have, um, some students and, I think some students, but definitely teachers from Stacy that are gonna share some of the things that they're doing in STEAM, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, with nothing else on our agenda, um, I'd like to note that it's eight-thirty and we are thirty minutes ahead of schedule. Um, so I'd say that's a, a good first meeting, it must be Meg and Joe Marias who do all the talking. So we'll thank them tonight. I know, um, but is there, do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Motion by Joe, second by Chris, all in favor? Great, thank you, everyone.